And welcome to the, I don't know what day it is today, January 23rd, 2013, School Board Education Meeting. If we can, I just want to let people know we are being videotaped and if we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we can start with introductions. Lynn Lindhart.
Kate Navarro.
Michael Cooper.
Jeredy Monroe.
Tom Douglas.
Diane Stever.
Matt Doherty.
Laura Bearman.
Charmaine Ridda Singer.
Judy Kehoe.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss the ESCO contract.
So, second? All in favor? Any opposed?
I have a question. So, that means we go.
Yeah.
Do we expect action after? We're going to come back out, right?
Yes.
Okay, that should be part of the motion.
Well, no, the assumption is that you're coming back out.
You'll be coming back into an open session.
Right, but that's supposed to be part of the motion, if you're going to have action afterwards.
And we'll have to continue with the meeting afterwards.
Yeah, we'll continue the meeting. So, we will, what, 15 minutes?
Yeah.
15 minutes?
I don't want these people sitting on here.
I know.
Is there just a room here we can go into, or?
Is there? I don't know.
No.
Okay. Visitors on an agenda item. Approval of minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Come on, I have to state your name, please.
Hi, evening. My name's Bruce Ginsberg. I'm president of the Swimming and Dining Services Club. I just have a question because I know you're going to be, of all, I appreciate everybody and all you're going through with this. I understand you're going to be hopefully moving forward with energy performance contract this evening. And at the last school board meeting discussion about the lighting and ceiling, and I think it was pointed out that it was up there under the EPC for that, and I think if they made a mistake, we looked at it on a, it was line item 114 on a previous proposal as the improvements to interior finishes, and it was not identified up on the energy performance list, unless I missed it.
Interior finishes, I do not believe were on there.
It had previously been identif, oh, I'm sorry, upgrade tool interior finishes?
Yes.
And when, I think the board asked a question, they said, well, it's up there under the lights, and I didn't see that line item, so.
What's on the EPC is a majority of the items that were taken off from the pools. However, interior finishes, Greg, did not make that cut in either position because we do not know if interior finishes would qualify under energy performance. It is not scheduled under the bond proposition at this point.
Then maybe more specific, the lighting and the ceiling aspect?
That could potentially be in energy performance, but they have to go through the energy audit.
Right, but that was not identified anywhere as a line item?
Because that wasn't initially identified, but we have already put it to the energy company that they need to look at that to see if it qualifies.
Great, thank you very much.
Right?
Right.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Approval of minutes of the January 2nd, 2013 Regular Board Meeting?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That cancels. Student Senate report, probably not with Regents week.
Yeah, I know they were going to be hard. If I can, there was a question from the board in regards to the student senate and discussions. Both Mr. Landry, the high school principal, met with the student senate as well as I did, both separately, we didn't know we each had made a meeting, and we explained some of the potential security enhancements. Most of the students in the senate, when they went out and talked, said the only concern is, the biggest concern is about any type of security enhancements being in locker rooms or bathrooms. And one of the interesting part was the student said, you know, we know we get videoed every place we go, however, it would be nice to know that if the building's being monitored, that it's clearly indicated as you enter the building. And both, I think, Mr. Landry and I said that that should be an appropriate accommodation that should be in any building, and I think that's one of the requirements under education law, when you're having any type of surveillance, that there is some type of notification and notification to the general public. So, that would have to be included as well. But in general, they were relatively supportive of the concept as long as there's open discussion going forward.
Okay.
Good.
Superintendent's report?
In the interest of time, just because I know this is a special meeting, I'm going to pass on that. The only thing I would say is that we're still digesting a lot of the information that came from the governor's budget yesterday, and it is still disappointing that after four years, there are increases to some schools, but unfortunately, we are not one of them. We're going to need a little time to digest that and come to the board as well as the community. However, I will say it's not as bad as it's been in several of the past years, but it still poses some challenge.
Okay. And Board of Education report?
Lynn and I and Dr. Douglas went to the noon hour aid assembly at Elsmere. That was a lot of fun. Our kids had a great time, appreciated people that we oftentimes, for whatever reason, overlook. I think they were very touched, and it was a great job by everyone. For my son, I think the high school students really appreciate the new exam sched, well, not the new, the current exam schedule from last year. One thing he mentioned under me, though, is that some kids have only 15 minutes between exams. I'm not sure, like two-hour exam, 15-minute, and then another, I'm not sure if that could be looked at for next year. He said some of the kids, there's no time to eat or go to the bathroom or anything, so that would be just, I don't know if that is a usual thing, but he said a lot of freshmen had morning exams and then right into the afternoon exam, but I know that, I would assume that other students appreciate the adjustment of the exam schedule from last year.
Tom just asked me if I could announce that you and Matt are receiving certificates from School Board U for leadership development opportunities totaling 150 points, and I would like to congratulate you and give you your pins and your certificates.
It's awful hard when you have the board president and vice president, and you don't know at the same time which board member to give them to, so thank you very much, Mr. Cooper.
Thank you.
Speaking of that, in beginning of March, I think it's the second weekend of March, there's, we're having the, NISPA's having the Capitol Conference, and it's going to combine both safety plus lobbying with legislature on budget issues and other educational issues, and just want to point that out. I think the notice has gone out for signups. I think the safety part is on Saturday, and then Sunday and Monday are the legislative part, just if anybody can attend.
Okay. Anyone else?
I think there's an anti-bullying program at the library tomorrow night, so if we, I know there was a program on gun violence in balls and spa, if I don't do that, I might try to do the local program around bullying, anti-bullying. It's written up in the spotlight today, so.
Anyone else? Okay. We have a presentation tonight from Ava Navarro. And our friend, you can introduce your friend. It's okay.
I'm.
It's done. You said it's done.
I am Ava Navarro, and this is my friend Cece Amory.
We think that Eagle Elementary should sell bottled water during lunchtime. Only two people did not want the school to sell bottled water. Also, if you don't, do not finish your milk, you have to throw it away, but water bottles can be brought back up to the classroom.
Water bottles are recyclable, and you get five cents back from the school.
Recycling helps the planet, too.
Sometimes people, people buy milk because they have to and throw it away. They only do that because they have to get dairy with their lunch.
Wait a sec. Cheese and yogurt are dairy, can't they get those instead?
A lot of people say it's, you need to go to the water fountain, but there are germs in the water fountain. And a lot of kids don't like it when you repeatedly ask to go out of the room.
The lactose intolerance students have to get juice.
Sometimes they don't like it, can't they have the option of water?
It looks like water is a very good choice.
So, did you take a survey?
Yeah.
With the kids? So, how many were, how many kids did you survey?
Ninety-three, and ninety-one said yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can I ask you guys a question? Do kids in the elementary school, my kids are a bit older now, but do kids in the elementary school have the, like, the old nail jeans or any kind of bottle, are they allowed to have those in classrooms, or do they?
Yes.
So, wouldn't, could you use those and fill up at the, I'm not opposed to selling the bottled water, I'm just wondering, because even, it'd be even better for the environment if you continue to use your same bottle at a water fountain, but are those not allowed, or?
They are allowed, and also.
Yes. This is. Okay. Also, like, we're thinking an ideal solution would be a water fountain with, like, a water bottle filler and mushrooms.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
You're right about the germs, I don't know if you ever did the science project, if you've looked under. I never go to them again.
You know, but the, the kind of standing station like the Culligan guy, not the big thing, having worked the water station at the Elsmere Field Day for years and used the athletic jugs, watching, kids will often use that just because it's cool to use, like, a thing, press the button and fill up your water, so, you know, I'm not sure about that. I am, I'm not sure if every elementary school allows kids to carry bottles.
See, that's what I didn't, that's what I didn't know.
Because I think there was an issue once when my kids were younger, whether it was they were just getting tipped over or whatever, but I'm not opposed to it, as long as I think hopefully kids will recycle the bottles. If you guys could put up posters and really, you know, tell kids not just to take the water and then throw the bottle with the water away, but I like the idea.
Yeah, that's a great idea. I guess I just always thought they sold them, so. Did you guys want to read your facts?
Yeah, sure.
I hope they have some.
The Healthy and Hunger-Free Act of 2010 requires schools to have drinking water available to students during meals. The new dates do not like us frequently asking to go to the water fountain, which is in the hall.
Water has zero calories. Ovacy to children age six to 11 has doubled in the past 20 years. Water has no sugar, dentists like that, too. Water is an essential nutrient that is vital to life. At least 50% of kids do not drink enough water.
Maybe in the future, and I.
What?
Oh, yeah, not right now. For now, the option of water bottles is good.
Does the law allow you to substitute the water for milk or juice at the meal?
I don't think so.
The 2010 law?
If you're getting, if you're getting a lunch.
I think it'd be à la carte.
Yeah.
It was à la carte, but not, it seems like if, if Congress passed that, that they would have, if they're insisting about water, that they would allow that as an option as part of that meal.
You would think. So, there's.
That's their petition.
Thank you. You guys did a great job.
We did.
So, we'll get this to Paul McInnes.
Yep.
Or, he's our food service director, so, nice job.
Can we investigate what the cost would be of installing those bottle filler in the cafeterias? I know at my wife's school, they just installed one, and she said it's been great because people can just bring in their own water bottles and you're not, I know, we encourage people to recycle, but there's still a lot of waste.
Also environmental.
Yes, a lot of water is.
Mr. Melty?
I like the water bottles.
Are there some of those in faculty lounges right now? Do they have those in faculty lounges?
They have those.
Okay.
Are they freestanding, or would they need pipes?
They work on that, the water fountain.
I think they have some water fountains that have, ready for the scoops, that want to drink out of the fountain, and then as well, one full of water.
They're the same thing, they can work both, like tabs?
Well, that would put a water fountain within the cafeteria that may be helpful as well.
Great.
Wait, if you do that, you have to make sure you have a separate thing just for bottles, though, because they're talking about drinking out of the water fountain.
Do you have some eagle pins to give the two of them? They did such a great job.
Oh, eagle pins. I do, I think. We do.
You girls did a great job.
You had a little pin.
Yeah, this is, we're crazy.
You can look like Dr. Douglas now, if he has an eagle pin.
Just like his.
Nice job.
Congratulations.
Nice job.
Nice job.
Very nice. And they're both in the band and the chorus.
Oh, what kind is that, is that tonight?
Yes.
So, hopefully we'll finish up and then we can go see you. Okay. So, I can go through the rest of the meeting? Okay. All right, finance. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, A through B.
Second.
Any discussion?
That's awful.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Professional personnel, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following instructional staff action items, A through G.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. It is recommended that the Board, I'm sorry, support personnel, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff act, action items, A through A, A, S.
Second.
Second.
I have a question.
Any, yeah.
Judy, can you explain this, please?
The bus driver, I'll change.
Yes. The BCUEA contract gives drivers an opportunity to bid two times a year, once at the beginning of the year when all the routes are established, and then again in January. Some of the routes are eligible to be rebid if they have increased by more than 31 minutes. So, what this is reflecting is the final adjustment and bidding opportunity for all the drivers whose routes change based on adjustments that were required in the fall with the new consolidated stops.
Do you know offhand roughly if we're additional hours with the result of all these changes? Are we going increasing the number of hours, decreasing, or is it staying about the same?
It's increasing the hours, that's what they're bidding upon. So, yeah, almost all of them that are listed there are slight increases in their hours for the drivers. It's still within the range of savings that we had talked about back at that October meeting.
So, why are they increasing so much?
It's the weekly hours, it's based on whatever the amount of the time is for the run, so sometimes they have to increase it if they had to get the kids to school more quickly, if they were adjusting based on the counts and having to split it. It's the change in configuration.
I think what Laura's asking, Judy, is the fact that they're, I mean, if they're just bidding out again, the number of hours really shouldn't fluctuate. I mean, they did at the beginning of the year because the, the schedule needed to be adjusted, but if the schedule's in place now, and they're just, you know, bidding.
Why are we increasing the hours?
They didn't have the opportunity to get the rebid and making that schedule permanent until this January bidding opportunity.
So, for instance, somebody who moved from two to 2.5 hours, has he been doing, he or she, been doing the 2.5 hours all along, and now it's just being internal, you know, accounted for, or?
And, and it might have been filled by another person, maybe, based on availability. You're getting to a specific level of bus assignment, so they didn't specifically.
I guess I'm just trying to figure out, and I think Lynn's got it, why we're increasing the hours, because it sounds like, yeah, if you added all this up, there's a lot more hours here. Why is it increasing the number of hours of the bus drivers?
Total, overall.
Total.
Some would decrease, but not as much as they increase, right?
Yeah, on average, they were going higher. In some cases, there were routes that did have to be added in order to either accommodate a new student. I can get you specifics, I'll talk to Al and Cindy about that.
But we've been paying the same amount along that we will be now.
But you would, yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, whatever the length of the route is to get the students to and from school is what we are obligated to pay the drivers. So, this bidding really just formalizes what their total hours required are for doing the routes.
The total number of hours is changing very much, it's just that the various drivers have bid on different routes and, and things, so.
So, it's all based on seniority, so.
Driving, the people may have changed because of the seniority.
Based on the seniority, the drivers want to have the routes that have the most number of hours, so when they formally bid, that's all based on their seniority. So, those with the most seniority have the access or the ability to get the routes that have the higher hours, so that's where some of the shifting in their hours is coming from.
So, kids are coming home and saying they have new bus drivers, like mine did today, and that's why.
Mm-hmm, and based on the bidding.
I think where the confusion is, is that you would think if whatever hours you added here, you would take away here.
Exactly.
You're in, another driver has a half his bid, now he's got a shorter bid, so is there...
But it sounds like it's increasing, although it almost sounds like it's just increasing formally, that it's been those hours all along, it's just it wasn't formal?
It wasn't bid, so, yes, it wasn't formalized. If they have changes, when they bid at the beginning of the year, that pretty much is setting their number of hours. If due to changes in the routes, they need to increase that, those additional hours are just paid separately through a timesheet process.
So, it won't affect the budget this year?
No, we are still within budget.
It affects budget, but it's still within, I mean, we are paying out more money now.
We've been paying it anyway.
But, yes.
No, we're not paying out more money.
Well, if you increase the hours because the length of time increased, yeah, to that extent, you'd be paying more.
And are some of these folks getting more money because they're higher in seniority? Does seniority affect how much they get per hour?
Generally, the longer you work, the higher your pay rate. That's based on the terms of the contract.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that carries, and.
Correspondence.
All right. Correspondents for Action, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following Correspondents' Action Item, A through B. So, motion?
So moved.
So, second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions on the policies. Do we ask those on the first read so the policy committee can think about it?
Oh, yeah, usually that is. Is this the first reading?
Yes.
Oh, so we don't have to vote on that, do we?
No, but I want to vote your feedback.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a question, too.
Okay. Just. We work very hard on these.
I know. Go ahead and talk about them. Mike and I, we're.
On the public school transportation, and this is just a word, I think Tom might even have a perspective on, and the first, it says resident pupils are eligible for transportation between home and childcare, blah, 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 blah. And the district school, they legally, oh, I get it, legally a tenant means Bethlehem legally, I thought they were talking about childhood legally. So, that's not an issue. In the second paragraph, the last sentence, it says buses, bus passes will not be used to provide drop-off at a student's work location. Do we, it says, okay, through 12, so, should it say student and parent's work location? Because the student might be working, but a parent may be working, too.
Well, the work location for the parent is already, that's not a drop, that's not a standard drop-off point, no matter what. We provide point A to point B, home to school, or one other care provider, but as far as the student, we don't provide student transportation to their work.
To their jobs. Okay, so you don't need that, okay. And I just think the video policy is very timely. I, I know some parents were upset about some movies shown at the high school level. There is one wording in here about selection criteria for films and videos, it's on the second page, item D, it says film or video will not contain excessive or gratuitous violence or sexual explicitness inappropriate for the age level of the class. I, I would just like them to say, why don't you, why are we showing things that have excessive or gratuitous violence or sexual explicitness, period? I mean.
I'll bring it up with the committee.
Yeah, just consider that, you know, just. Well, I mean, let's say you were showing something like Glory, where you're showing the influence of, you know, Black soldiers during the Civil War, I mean, it's a war war. So, I mean, in a sense, it's a violent movie, but yet, there's a teachable moment with it, so.
Or if you're showing, say, part of Schindler's List.
Right, that would be another one.
There's a teachable moment there.
Or Amistad, I think.
Amistad, too, would be another one.
Okay, great, but good job.
I have a quick question. The elementary class size enrollment guidelines, is that, is the only change on that, the date?
It's the date, and I believe the last line from the word cap has been removed to guideline.
Guidelines, because there really are guidelines.
I thought, and maybe it was, I, I, I don't have my computer, so I was a little disadvantaged looking at some of this stuff, but in the past, didn't we used to show what the changes were? Or not? So, that, is it?
Because there were a lot of changes, I mean, I mean, Mike did the editing part, you don't want, you don't want, you wouldn't want to see all that.
I guess, and if there's big substantive changes, maybe we should, you should at least either highlight them, or at least maybe when we discuss them at the table, maybe you guys could just say, these are the major changes that were made. Editorial, no, but any kind of substantive changes, it might be helpful if we knew.
Yeah, I can just say on one of, one of the policies, there was over 200 changes, but most of it was all formatting.
Yeah, and that's fine, I'm not, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about any kind of substantive.
I mean, we may have changed some words and whatever, but I, I'm not sure. You have content changes, the significant content. The videos, one was a new one, so.
Then it would be helpful.
So, that was new to begin with, the video and the curriculum materials, so, so all that would be new.
Thank you for all the changes.
And then I think the other thing that we talked about, too, if there were major changes, is to even do it before so we could have some input, like on some of the issues. Do you know what I mean? Like if there was something.
I think that's why they posted those.
Right, right. But if you're thinking of making the major change, just.
And then, are we done with policies? Can I ask another question?
On the special, well, we got to vote on that, on the special ed?
Oh, no, we, okay, no, go ahead.
Finish that one, okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries?
What we?
Well, we have, I had A, just A, yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
A and B were there together, but I guess it's just A, because we didn't need to do it for B.
B was first read and now.
So, should we amend that? Just put for item A, okay?
This is first reading for item B.
And then, can I ask a question back on an item?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, we went a little fast there.
That's okay.
On the continuing ed list, how are those prices determined? Is it up to the person to determine what the price is going to be, and is it that then correspond to how much we charge for the class, or how does this all work? Are you talking about for the instructors? Yes, because that's the list that tells us how much they get.
Yeah, they negotiated with the instructor, so if certain instructors, you know, have been with us a while, they may obviously ask for a little more money than someone who's just starting out. It also depends upon, you know, how much interest there is in the class, so they can kind of guarantee that class will run, so, yeah.
And I think it's supposed to be self-sufficient.
Yeah, it is.
Yes, so, as long as.
So, then, do the prices of the classes, I haven't compared.
Vary, yeah.
They vary based on what we're paying the teachers?
And sometimes there's supplies that need to be part of it.
And I noticed that sometimes we charge something if the supplies are bigger, but I just wondered how we, some of these are, they're nice fees.[1727.13]
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah, we have some resolutions, so Dr. Douglas will walk us through some of that.
One of the things that the Board of Education asked for us to provide through a series of meetings over the past several months is now a refinement of the project, as well as the resolutions for the board to consider on any special bond in the capital facility outline. In front of each board member, I just want to make sure, you should have one piece of paper that says, resolution establishing scope of Central School District capital project and scheduling a special district meeting. And that should be three pages. Unfortunately, they're copied out of order, we just want to make a note of that. It's page one, on the back of it is page three, and we've just handed you page two. So if you can please put those three together. And these will also need to be read into the record, and I'll ask Judy to do that to make sure all the dates are appropriate. This first resolution is the resolution, we have council here if there's any questions, but this first resolution is the resolution to authorize going forward with a capital facilities proposition, correct? Then it will be followed by a second resolution, which you should also have, I believe that's stapled together, and it's called legal notice. And that's notice of special meeting of the qualified voters of Bethlehem Central School District, and it is also three pages, and they were stapled together. So I want to make sure that you have page one, two, three. So those are the two resolutions that we've prepared for the board to discuss and talk about, or any questions for council. And also, council's here to verify and make sure that our dates are appropriate, along with our district books, so does everyone have the two resolutions?
Sure, I'm, I'm a bit confused, they look the same. The one that you just.
Page one, here, that's more like, there's page three, and then one, page two.
So, but my question then is, it's one resolution that has both bonds in it, so if somebody at the table wanted to oppose one of the bonds as opposed to the other one, they couldn't do that, they'd have to vote against the entire resolution.
Ah, I would believe.
But right now, the way the resolution is.
Right now, the way it is, is together, because that's what the board said at the last meeting, is prepare a resolution with proposition one and proposition two.
I guess I thought they were going to be two resolutions, I didn't realize they were going to be.
Well, we had these out, I mean, we made sure that we got these out for the past two weeks, so that's.
The other question I, I wondered, why is this not on our agenda? Shouldn't this have been on our agenda if we're considering it for a vote?
Because we were not established or set with the dates, potentially, because there's also a second resolution in case the board wishes to change that. That is why there's no resol, I can't prepare two resolutions to put onto the agenda. So, I asked the board to, I think it was the last formal meeting in here, and we decided not to bring the resolutions to that, the public hearing. We were bringing them here as a walkthrough resolution.
No, no, I understand that, I'm just talking logistics.
Yeah.
Shouldn't it, shouldn't consideration of the resolutions been on our agenda if we're taking a board vote?
If they are planned, if they are planned, yes, if they're a walkthrough resolution, no.
Okay, then we, should we have amended the agenda before we started this meeting?
No. Any motion, because these are just for your consideration right now. Any action by the board still requires a motion and a second to even enter into any resolution. So it's up to the board whether or not they wish to take this forward at this time.
Got you, okay, so whether we're putting it onto the agenda.
So we need.
Do we need a, we need a motion, to make a motion to, that we consider the resolution establishing the scope of the Bethlehem Central School District capital project and scheduling a special district meeting as provided by the superintendent.
Second, any discussion?
I'm not sure, so what is the discussion about, I do have something I want to discuss, but I'm not sure when it is, I'm a little confused, so what, what are we discussing now?
Just the resolution.
No, put it on the resolution to consider the resolution.
To consider it, so I, so we don't need to discuss, then we discuss the resolution after we consider it.
And then we vote on it when?
Don't try to, you're confused, now I'm getting confused.
Oh, I thought we were making a motion to vote on it, no?
No, that's what I'm trying to.
Okay, I didn't know we needed to make a motion to consider it, right? Isn't that what Tom said?
I think that's what his motion was.
Yeah.
So he, from what I understand, Mr. Downey has made a motion to consider this resolution, and it was seconded by Ms. Lindhart.
Right.
So now you're in discussion of anything about this resolution.
Okay, and this is on the bonds, this is the two bonds?
Two propositions.
Two propositions. Okay, and I had asked for a slide of the breakdown of the field cost, is that available?
I, I do not have that slide with me, with what I have.
It was on the portal before. I asked that it be presented at the meeting. The one with the individual projects and the costs.
I'm trying to get to it. I know I have it in my computer, and I apologize with everything that we've been going through for the past day to try to do that, and so. I actually just had it, so I'm just, there it is.
So while you're looking for this, just to confirm, this, if we vote on this, this will then put bring the resolutions to the table for a separate vote. We will then have a vote on the actual resolutions.
I thought that's what we're doing now, is we're discussing the resolution and then we'll vote on it.
Do you mean that we're putting up on two propositions, as far as?
No, no. If we vote at the table here now, is it voting actually on the resolutions, or is it a vote to consider the resolutions at the table?
I'm not sure, unless it's a motion to request a committee or script, we need a resolution to simply discuss the matter.
See, that's what I.
Wants to have discussion, in session about the resolution, I would recommend you simply go forward with that call and then free discussion. When that discussion is concluded and you're ready to vote, we should then have a motion on the actual vote on the resolution.
Right, and if we were to make any modifications, like with the amount or whatever, then we would insert that in this resolution.
What, that's made a motion to consider the resolutions, not a motion to approve the resolutions, there's a difference.
Okay, so we're considering it, we're discussing it.
Do another resolution.
Well, then you're going to have to vote on that motion, you can't leave the motion hanging there.
Right.
Okay.
What? You could withdraw the motion, yes, you could withdraw your motion.
We could, well, we have a first and a second, do we want to take a vote?
We can, does it matter, I mean, do we need to have a motion just to discuss it?
We don't.
That's the same, we don't.
But what you're saying is he made a motion too.
Then I will throw in a motion.
Okay.
Can I just ask, do people in the community know who she is? Because she's talking.
Good evening, everybody, Beth Barret, Southern Attorney at White and Osterman, our firm, so this is General Counsel, Detective.
So we can just discuss it, the resolution, because I know that there, there are talks about a couple of changes in there. I don't know who wants to talk about that.
Right, and the resolution, we have to enter the dollar amounts, because right now they're blank, so we would need to enter those dollar amounts.
They're on the first version.
They're on the first page, you just have to.
There's two versions.
Yes, I'm sorry. I, Ms. Stinger, I did send that to Sal, he's trying to get it right now, up on the.
So I don't know if other people have other questions or anything they want to ask, but I will wait for it.
Well, Tom, you can talk about some of the things you said you looked at.
Like the playgrounds and the kitchen equipment.
Jimmy, some changes, I think it'd be good to.
Just let me send this one thing, left of sale, that's another one. Yes, and I just sent you another one, just so, while I'm talking about this, if you can get that, so I have it in the PDF form.
So do you want me to talk about this one that was up?
Real quick, ways to get in the other one. One of the things that the board discussed and sort of heard at the last public hearing was in regards to a couple of issues. One regarding kitchen equipment at Clarksville, and the other one was in regards to playgrounds from the communities. One of the things that our administrative team did is we went and looked back at it, as well as many other questions in regards to proposition, the second proposition, the turf proposition, and the first proposition. We made sure that our numbers were pretty much confirmed on both sides, made sure that we, if we had any corrections, to make sure the corrections. And we are bringing forward to the board tonight a refined list, which is, I believe, twenty, a total between both propositions of 23,660,000 and some hundred. Seven fifty. Where did we come from, getting down from 23,900, I think was the other, the other number. We made some reductions in the playgrounds, but still providing support for each of our playgrounds. However, we reduced the playgrounds by about, I think it was 34,000, $36,000 in hard costs, which translates to $50,000 total in soft costs. So each playground was reduced from around 166,000 to 180,000, down to about 114,000 or 124,000. And that allows us to have some discussions with the PTA in regards to if they are fundraising, we have this amount, we haven't forgotten anyone. However, there's a certain, certain amount that we can do, and there's other amounts that we can't, so we've drawn back about $150,000 in that area. In regard to the kitchen equipment, Mr. Nolte and his staff are in the process, as they were already, in removing. So although we have some higher kitchen totals, we have already removed some of the items out of Clarksville to be used at some of our other buildings. With what's remaining, we can probably reduce about another $78,000 total hard costs and soft costs, with those items being removed from Clarksville. And I think the two schools slated for them that would be able to utilize them at this point are Elsmere and Hammergrau. So that would be the other, as well as finalizing all of our numbers, bringing down our costs from 40% to 37% through the work of Ashlyn McGraw, as well as Greg, the total bond at this point that we would propose for both propositions is 23,667,500.
660, 715.
Okay. With the two propositions being proposition one at a total of 20,185,299,000 and the second proposition, making sure that we didn't duplicate any numbers from one proposition of the other, being at 3,475,416,000. And there's a slight increase in one, a slight decrease in the other, but overall, the net impact is a decrease to both bonds. So that leaves us, you've got all of them now? I'll state it. So here, I think, is what you were asking for, this first page, this is roughly, this is item, just so that you know, this is item 11. All the drainage work that is not related to the Van Dyke Field. The next page is, can't see very easily, this is all the work that would be required separate and distinct to the Van Dyke Field now to fix drainage, lighting, track, and tennis courts.
I just had a couple of questions on, in the three area.
Option three?
Uh, no, under number three, no, it's, go up to where he says.
And this one is option three, which is the turf field, and this is all inclusive minus the drainage.
See where it says three right there, new, whatever, the field drainage is listed as $400,000, is that in addition to the money that's set aside in the first bond for drainage?
No. Stand along for the Van Dyke Field.
No, no, there's, there's actually, under option, quote, option one in the main bond, there's money, I believe, set aside for drainage of the same field, I believe, in that 1.88 something million dollars.
Right, in case.
There's some, some of that money, because, for example, if that bond is the only one that passes, some of that goes into the sand drains. So there's some money in that 1.88 million for drainage, I would assume. That's irrigation.
Practice football field?
No, no, this is the real, this is the real field.
What I, what I believe is being asked is that, in this proposition right here, if you cost this entire proposition out, this is separate and distinct. In other words, if we, if we selected option three and it passed, this is how much it would cost in hard cost numbers with escalation plus the 37%, which would be 5,323,88 something, I think. What happens is, and it gets confusing, is down here at the bottom, I think Greg put it, proposition two is the total cost for the synthetic turf, which is the 5323880. But you have to, in order to make the numbers match, not the projects match, in other words, the project descriptions won't match between the two.
No, I see that.
But to make the numbers match, it would cost 5323888 to do the whole turf, drainage, the whole kit and kaboodle, okay? But when you're putting up the proposition, you're taking out 1.848 to move over to do option one over there. The 1.888 is the exact amount for that option only over there, but you can't, what the board's not doing is doing both options.
No, I understand, so my, my, my question is related, but it's different, I'm just saying that in that 1.8, what's now, 848? Is money for drainage, what I'm hearing is, and I understand there are two different projects, one's on natural turf field and one's an artificial. But in this, this listing of the artificial turf field, there's $400,000 listed for drainage. So I would imagine that's above and beyond the drainage needs, above and beyond the drains that would be covered under the 1.884, whatever, 1.84, whatever it is. Yes, that's, yes.
Yeah, because they're completely different.
Okay, okay, so it costs more. And just the, under H, turf center logo and end zone lettering at $40,000, is that, does that include the lines on the field, or is that just the eagle and the words Bethlehem on the ends?
Just the eagle and the letters.
Okay, what I, I'm glad I asked for the breakdown, I'm not going to ask the board to amend this, we've been through this too much. I asked Dr. Douglas that when you make the presentations to the community, that as much as they get this breakdown of every single thing that's in the main bond, including something that's under $10,000, that they get this breakdown too. Because I was always under the assumption that, that whatever, if it's 3 million or 5 million goes to a field. There's $40,000 going to lettering, there's $700,000 going to stadium support. I don't care where the community votes, it's up to the community now, but I want the community to be informed of what that three-point, whatever it is up to this point, 3.4 million dollars.
3.4 on that side.
Yeah, is what that is buying. I think that's only in continuing our transparency, it's not just an artificial turf field. It's lettering, it's, and, you know, some of these things could go, I would propose that, but as I said, the board's discussed this enough. But I want the community to know exactly the cost of each of those projects, and I ask, you want to see what I'm saying, I'm just asking them to see that breakdown.
Well, we'll put it on our website, that's no problem. One of the questions, you said $700,000, I'm trying to find it.
It's under stadium support, number four.
Oh, the sto, total for stadium support, okay. In other words, the bleachers, the press box, the additional asphalt, offload, the landscape improvements, and the scoreboard, and timers.
Yep.
No.
Okay, I just want the community to.
I was just trying to find out where 700 was coming from, I wasn't looking at the total line.
Yeah, Sherman, we, we always discuss that if we went with the biggest turf field, that all of that infrastructure's got to get moved out to accommodate a bigger field.
I just want the public to know the individual projects and the cost of those.
Like we, like we've done, we'll have Bill put this information up for the community to be able to get to.
Any other questions, or?
So these numbers aren't the latest then either, is that true?
Here, here are the latest numbers I'm just putting up. The ones that I just gave you, yes, they are.
They are.
Are those different than the ones that came out this afternoon?
It's different than the ones I looked at this afternoon.
No, the ones, the ones I gave you are the same, the same that you should have asked.
Came out today, like sometimes, okay.
They were out last night, I did them at 10:30, yeah. You may not have gotten them till then with our network working the way it has been. So here is the turf proposition at 3475416. Oops, I'll get to that one, sorry. And then, the bond.
Can we, I mean, is this, if this is in the resolution calling it the Van Dyke Field, I mean, do we have to stick with that name?
No, for the resolution, we need to clearly identify where we're doing the work. Afterwards, it would, the name would most likely be either the Van Dyke Field, or, because we have to clearly distinguish, multi-purpose athletic field. The reason being is the turf would be multi-purpose, the one proposal for drainage is just for the Van Dyke Field, so that people know exactly where the information is.
Right, but there's also, and then to distinguish it from the main proposition that has drainage on the other.
Drainage for the other. Yeah, that way we're clear with the public.
But it doesn't have to be called that?
No, just in the resolution. Okay? Okay? Any other questions?
I make a motion that we vote on the resolution that just discussed by the board, the resolution establishing the scope of the Bethlehem CSD Capital Project and scheduling a special district meeting.
I'll second.
Sorry, point of order. I don't believe that's the correct language that you should be using. You don't make a motion to vote, you make a motion to adopt or approve.
Okay.
Because otherwise, then we're going to have to do another motion, then adopt or approve.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution previously discussed by the board.
So we have a first and second, any discussion? Okay, I just need to talk about just something real quick. Last week, and actually a couple of times, I was asked to recuse myself from voting. And I just want to make sure people know that I do not benefit personally at all with this turf field. For some reason, they also put my husband in this, who had never had anything to do with promoting the turf field either. Just one of my brothers was one of the original committee members that came forward. But if people knew my family, they would know I have four other brothers who are against it. But just, so as far as that goes, I'm not going to recuse myself unless board members think otherwise.
I don't think you should.
Okay. Okay, and then the other one, I know we were asked last week too, if any of us benefited personally, so, and I would say no, I just want to make sure none of us, okay. So, we ready to vote? All in favor?
No.
You have to do it individually.
Oh, sorry, okay. I guess we'll just go.
No, you have to do each name, you have a list there.
Okay. It's not. Okay. Laura Ladbeerman?
I just want to make a comment with my vote, or a couple of comments actually. I will vote in favor of this. I still have very strong opposition to the whole camera situation. And I'm not asking for a motion from at the table, but I would like it included in the minutes that I, that the board, I think that there should be explicit policies written before any of the cameras are activated at all on how they're to be used, who has access to them, how long the information's going to be maintained, how it would be disposed of or covered over, and just the details on how these cameras are going to be functioning.
We've actually already asked, you know, with the policy committee, we've asked for sample policies from other districts around the state.
Great, thank you. The second thing I want to say is on the bond, on the facilities, I mean, sorry, the turf field part of the bond, I haven't decided exactly how I'm going to vote actually in March on the issue, but I will support the resolution to give it to the community to vote. I do believe that it is a little extravagant, given what are the finances of the district for the past few years. I'm disappointed a little bit that if these primarily football boosters have felt so strongly about this for so many years that they haven't shown any effort to raise any money toward it, whereas other sports, things have done that, you know, soccer people have raised enough money to do the whole soccerplex, the music people raised enough money to buy Steinway, and the hockey people, when they were threatened, they raised the money to continue their sport. So I'm just a little disappointed that if they really believed this, that we didn't try and, or they didn't try and raise some of the funding before they came to the board and said the community should pay for it. So I think we're just cutting so many other things in our budget, and I know it's not an academics versus athletic, I'm not talking about that at all, I just feel like this is a little bit extravagant for all the other cuts that we're making. Our programs aren't ideal in the academic side, in the music side, in any of the other things, and I just wonder if this is the right decision. But I will leave it to the community, and as I said, I haven't decided exactly how I will be voting on it, but I will support the resolution.
Okay. Michael W. Cooper?
I say we should let the community decide at this juncture, so I say hi.
And Matt Downey?
I agree with Mike, and I do believe though that the football boosters have done a lot of fundraising over the years and various things that they've donated to the district. So I wouldn't want to give them that, that they at least have done stuff in the past. I know they had a shed and whatnot at the middle school, and they've done efforts to, I think, at the high school here, but I think the community should decide, and I vote yes.
Okay. Lynn L. Lenhart?
I also support putting this forward to the community to decide. I think some of the work that needs to be done at schools, you know, has been on the back burner, especially the last couple of years, as we've had to make, you know, a lot of cuts, so certainly in the area of operations and maintenance, we haven't been able to do all that, that, you know, we really need to do to keep up with the needs. And then, of course, looking at technology, we obviously need to do a lot of work there besides on the buildings themselves. I am supporting this. I do want to comment though, because it's come out, you know, whether in the spotlight or at meetings, about whether, you know, there's been accountability for past bond issues, and I certainly have been here for several of them. And one thing that, and there are some things that actually that are on this list that were on, you know, previous bond issues. And the problem comes up during a bond issue is, you know, if bids don't come in as, you know, we can have the best advice on how the bids are going to go, but sometimes they don't go that way, or, you know, so that maybe things are costing a little more than your best estimate, or change orders occur because you need to do things a little bit differently, because let's say suddenly in some place where they didn't expect that when, in doing one thing, they found either asbestos or, you know, some other problem with, you know, especially when you have old buildings, when you start digging, you might find more than you were looking for. So, you know, when it comes to accountability, it's not that anybody is taking money and going off on vacation anyplace, certainly the money's accounted for, but we may not have always been able to do all that we were able to do, you know, despite what the community voted on the bond issue. So I just wanted to clarify that, because as I said, there have been items in the spotlight or, you know, mentioned at the forums concerning that. So anyhow, as I said, I do support this going forward to the community, and we'll let the community decide.
Katrin Navarro?
I'll vote yes and putting it to the public.
Said she votes yes and putting it to the public. And then you want me to go out of order, right? So Charmaine, what's your center?
Again, I agree with everyone, as you go to the community, I think we've had a lot of discussion. I've actually really appreciated the process, because I've never been through a bond before, and I made sure I got myself on committee so I could see the initial interviews with several other board members, go to different committee meetings, just so I was as informed as I could be, and I'm glad this was a smaller one than a larger one, just so I could learn. One thing I heard from all the forums, particularly the last one, is things don't get done because you pass a bond for a certain amount, and then suddenly things gum up or new things get put on. So one thing I will ask as much as possible is for the field bond, I've asked for numbers about fencing and cameras, that we might need additional, I don't think that's, people probably didn't have time to put that on, but should there be additional needs for that field, it better not come out of that first bond. I mean, we have asbestos tile and all the rest, so if there's additional needs for that field, something else from that bond has to pay for it, because we didn't do items number three and all the rest, because we just didn't have enough money. I do think both bonds are higher than I would have liked. It's up to the community to decide, I only ask that the community be as informed as possible, make your own personal decision. I do ask that the district make available and advertise the idea of absentee ballots, since the vote may be at a time when certain people may be out of town for extended periods. And that's it, I've appreciated everyone's patience, and that's it, I've appreciated the process. And so I would vote to put it to the public. Whether I disagree or agree is not the issue right now, it goes to the public.
And I'm Diane Giacconi Stever, and I guess I should have talked, yeah, I guess I jumped the gun there, but I also vote yes, and I think it's good, and it will go to the public, and I am glad that we did separate it out, so, because that's kind of what we heard a lot of. So that's it.
So at this time, you have unanimous consent of putting it forward? The second process in this endeavor is the legal notice that also has to be approved by the board or not?
It is not a separate resolution. What you folks have just done is adopt and take all these steps you need to take to put the two propositions up. The legal notice, and it gets a little confusing for the editor, is a long form notice that will go in, published in two papers, and one of the pieces of the resolution you just passed directs your district clerk to publish that notice. And then ultimately contains the two short form propositions that will actually appear on the ballot. There was a concern a moment ago about making sure the public was aware of procedures, how, where, when, why to get absentee ballots. That information is ultimately included in the legal notice that will be published in the Times Union and in the Spotlight. If you wish, it would certainly be entirely appropriate for the board to simply by motion approve the form of the legal notice, and that's all I think you really need to do, is make sure that all of you are comfortable, that it accurately reflects what you intended in the resolution, and then it's appropriate for the district clerk to go ahead and publish it.
And this is pretty much identical, minor wordsmith change here or there, that does not change the intent of what has been in my past couple of updates to the board as well, as far as the proposition language that would also be up at any electoral.
I just have a quick question. If someone's not here to vote, how do we, they're not going to be here to see the legal notice either, is there other systems? I don't know that we're going to have to, like, half my neighborhood cleared out of Florida, when my kids were younger. New families have moved in, so it's not such an issue, but not that I'm saying we have to track down people, but you understand what I'm saying? If people aren't here to read the legal notice and figure out how to get their absentee ballot, are there, Carol, do you have any ideas?
One of the things that we have already discussed as a board as well, is that we need to send out a mailing to every single household explaining the information, because not everybody gets here. We will certainly put, just like we would with our budget, we would put that information in there as well. In addition, I'll direct the communication office to put both the resolution as well as the legal notice on the website as well. So we're going, I think we're going well above and beyond what is the requirement. I would suggest, just as a matter of record, because we've done it very formally throughout, that I would take, you know, Council of Barasa's recommendation that I would like to have the board at least agree to the format that we provide.
This was going backwards just a second, but did we agree then that March 12th is the date?
Yes.
That's 45 days.
That will be about 47 days after Sunday, I think it is. 45 after Sunday, 47 after tomorrow.
You made a motion, right?
No, that's up to you guys.
I just want to reinforce the fact of mailing something out to everyone. I know there are a lot of people that still, I mean, would say, well, you can look at the website. Well, Matt, you know, I mean, we have a lot of senior citizens, and I guess I am a senior citizen now, but I mean, older senior citizens that probably don't look at websites that much, and wouldn't think to do that, and to be able to download an application for an absentee ballot. So I think by having the mailing go out to all, you know, members of the community and in the school district, I think really fulfills, I think, what I think is necessary, so everybody's aware of the voting, what they would be voting for.
Anyway, so I think this will help.
Anyone else?
So do you need a motion for the legal notice? Someone?
The first and second, okay. Any discussion? And then do we have to do this individually, or can we just do a hand?
No, I think she's just, it's just.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries. Anything else, or? I think we're, oh no. Recognition visitors of a non-agenda item. Diane, I'm going to ask you to leave to go to the conference. Yes, okay, thank you. Enjoy, Kate. Thank you.
You aren't going to bend down?
My name's Tim Minich, I'm the president of the BCAA, and I hadn't intended to speak this evening, but I thought it was worth reiterating our thanks for the tireless effort that all of you put in in running a extremely participatory and transparent process for the last, for all of the last months here. And I'd also would just like to say that there are hundreds of families that are involved in supporting our student athletes, and I think when they do that, and when they work in true partnership with the district, they're demonstrating everything that we would like to see in citizens. And for that, I am extremely grateful and think it makes our community a stronger one. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Anyone else?
Happy to hear everybody. My name's Scott Bonanno. I want to just first say again, thank you for all your hard work through this process, and address Ms. Beerman's comment specifically about the football club, but not in a confrontational way. One of the reasons that fundraising is very difficult to do is because we're not allowed to address businesses and have sponsorship. So to undertake a project of this magnitude, it would have been virtually impossible for us to do it, because it comes back to our community. We'd be paying a tax a different way. So unless we were able to go out and fundraise through corporate sponsors, we're really just taxing the people that would be interested in paying the tax anyway. So it really, you know, if we're talking a few, $20,000, $30,000, and just for your information, we, our operating budget every year is $30,000. We spend $30,000 every year on these kids. So we take it in from the community, we put it back into the school and the kids, so it's a pretty significant amount of money that people are stepping up with every year. It's not one year, it's every year we do that. So if you really want us to go out and fundraise, we would be happy to do it, but we need to have the handcuffs taken off and allow us to go after the corporate sponsors, because that's where the real money's at. You know, we very easily could have the AT&amp;T pavilion at our school, but we've got to be able to fight that fight. They'd love to have it, the Home Depot, Snack Shack, whatever it is, but we can't do it because of the rules and the laws. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Why we have that here? We cannot do corporate sponsorships, correct?
Well, you know what I think suggests, Tom? I'd be happy to provide a memo to you and the board on that, summarizing the state of the current law. We did that a couple of years ago.
Pouring rights, I should say pouring rights. Community didn't want it.
Yeah, so we don't, we won't need that at this point, it's pretty clear at least.
The community didn't, well, at that time, of course, things weren't as bad, and the economy at the time.
It would be good though to clarify the various things, what's permissible and what's not permissible.
Yeah, if you could prepare that, and I'll put it in one of my updates for the board. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Future meetings and events, Wednesday, February 6, 7 o'clock, regular board meeting. And Wednesday, February 27, 7 o'clock, regular board meeting, and Wednesday, March 6, 7 o'clock, regular board meeting. Okay? And?
These are also, just so the community knows, these are also budget presentations, and of course, so it's not just a regular board meeting, this is one of our processes for the community to hear and get the information the correct way, instead of by word of mouth and maybe having a pass it on or telephone game going on.
Tom, usually, and I don't know if it's been in the minutes part, but at least when we list these dates, it usually says which departments are going to be discussed that evening.
We're trying, we're trying to clean that up to get the best information out before any potential referendum, so we have to change that, and we have a meeting tomorrow to try to formalize.
So I think that's important to note, so that people know which departments are being discussed which nights.
And then Matt just wanted me to point out that the meetings are the first and the fourth Wednesday of the month. Usually we do the first and the third, but the third is February break. And we do not have to go into executive sessions, right?
No.
I move to Jordan.
All in favor? All in favor? Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.